Hey JR, can you hear me okay? Okay, sorry JR, my sound was muted. Can you hear me okay? I think he can. He said, "I think my sound is..." Okay, I can hear you just fine. I think my sound is transmitting based on the auto captions I can see. Okay.
I bet you can hear him now.
Okay. Can you try talking now JR?
Yes, I can.
There we go, I hear you. Thank you.
Alright, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. First item is the minutes from the last meeting. Everybody had a chance to review. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next, we have the bills. Everybody had a chance to review the bills? If there's no questions or changes, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is Casey pushed out the finances to you guys. We just need a motion to approve and accept your submission.
Is it the cash balance one or the budget?
Oh.
Oh, yep.
Nicole makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is delinquent bills. The shut off would be the 24th. I've been asking to approve the disconnects for September 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jason makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion?
One, um, under here, number 27. Just curious, is that real old one or why is it so dry?
Let me look.
Or is it an extra number on there?
Twenty-seven?
Yeah. Cause it's like ninety-five and then went to nine twenty-two.
Yep, so the entire amount overdue, this is a very old one. The entire amount overdue is nine twenty-two thirty-two. The most recent bill is ninety-five forty. My assumption would be is because the electric's shut off but water isn't. That would be my assumption. I'd have to look though.
Cause it's in apartments, so.
Right, yep.
So they don't... So with electricity, but you still have... So you're basically saying he hasn't paid the ninety-five forty?
Correct.
Ever for many months.
That's, yeah, as of right now, you guys just don't do water shut offs. You do electric shut offs, but no water ones.
Ninety-five would be like mosquitoes and everything, the other things other than electric.
That's my assumption. I'd have to look on the computer. But typically with a bill that deep, the electric's gonna be shut off by now, easy, so.
Still marveling at the fact. I don't know, is there anything we can do about that? I know I can't shut off the water, but JR would have an option or something that, could this basically go on forever?
Well, has the owner of the apartment been notified yet?
Every single person that's in an apartment, we send a letter to the landlord as well.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
So, any suggestions on that or?
JR, do you have any suggestions?
Hey JR, did you hear that at all?
No.
There you are, sorry.
I heard it. I don't have the bill in front of me, so I can't see exactly what we're talking about. It's not in the online. So, I can definitely talk with Casey after the meeting to see if there's a way to pursue either shut off or collection or something.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Paul?
No, if you want any questions.
Okay, any other questions? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. We'll go on to the commissioners' reports. We'll start with Nicole.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, just a couple things. I just wanted to give a shout out to Zach. He gave me here a while back. He gave me a tour of the water plant. And if you guys haven't been out there, if you all have been out there, it's quite a place. I think, I think at some point, we should look at doing some type of a tour on that place. And then get the opportunity to the public if they wanted to come in, do like an open house type thing at some point. I think, I'd never been out there, so I really, kudos to the commissioners and whoever was on when that was built, because it really, it really looks nice out there. So, not that I can compare it to anything, but I was pretty impressed. Zach, I mean, that, he just, he didn't know I was coming, and it was just spotless out there. He had things, and a few things that he was telling me he was working on and, and, boy, can't let him get away. He really, I was really happy and that, and that's his baby out there. So, I just wanna say, thanks Zach, that, that me and I'm sure everybody on this commission appreciates how well that's ran out there and how he takes things to heart out there on everything, so. On the electrical side, of course, we're still working on, you know, things for next year. Right now, he's just kinda cleaning up some things, fixing some holes that he feels comfortable straightening that won't break. He's still working on, he's working getting outlets fixed, so we can get all the Christmas lights working. This, lit up this fall. He's having a hard time finding the right kind of socket that'll fit those pools. And there's a few other things he's working on there on the line street pool. He said some of them are getting predated. So, I might have to go through some of them with him to make sure that, you know, before we paint them, when that time comes, that we don't paint one, that we probably should just replace. That's down the road, things that he's looking at. I did ask him to research, looking at maybe lighting up that, the two sides out, the two billboards at the interstate. If there's something we can do to, if there's not a lot involved, to see if we can do something. We know there's some wire there and there's some old lights there, but so it was lit at one time. See if we can do something to get that lit up. He's gonna look into that for us too, so when he's currently working on, still working on streetlights slowly but surely, so. If you have a streetlight that's out, out of snow. Brian, of course, he just got back from more lineman training. That's going good on that. Load control side, Abby just gave me an update. There's sixty-eight incomplete as of today. So, there's another one that, Casey, you've got some good people there. You know, that's, she's doing a lot of work above and that's impressive. She's doing, all the phone calls, I couldn't imagine the calls and the contacts she's making on that, and I can't say how much I appreciate. She's taken on a job that the people before her couldn't, couldn't complete, and she's getting it down to sixty-eight, so. She's making progress, and I know some of them people in that sixty-eight, she's probably not even able to contact, so. Those might, only way I might be able to contact them is when they get the charge on their bill. They can come in, so, so I wanna shout out to her, you know, that's, I know that's a lot of work for her and I really appreciate it, so. And then on HEDC, and some of you may have, may not have heard, that they're sponsoring the Lead Local Course. And HEDC is gonna pay for any Hillsborough residents. I don't know if I said that last time or not. But if you, if there's anybody here that'd like to go do that course, it's over in Mayville on October sixteenth during the day. If there's any people in this organization or anybody in your organization that know that could benefit from something like that. It's called Lead Local Course, and it's just put on by the NDSU Extension, so, and I've heard nothing but good things about it. So, if anybody's interested from Hillsborough or the Hillsborough area here, the HEDC will pay for that fee to go there, so.
Do you know what, kinda what that course like is about or contains for people to know a little bit?
It's on, yeah, it's, it's on, a lot to do with boards. Let me see if I can find the exact description, as you know off the top of your head, Levi Mike.
The course is designed for those coming into any boards or commissions or leadership in rural America.
Thanks, sent Abby and Sarah to it when it was in Cavalier. They really enjoyed it. They said it was great for parliamentary procedure and, yeah, all things board considered.
Well, it's for training for aspiring elected or appointed leaders serving on boards and councils, et cetera, so it's, it's just training for anybody that's gonna be on those organizations. But if you're, if you have any aspirations to be on any committees or boards, or even wanna expand your knowledge on it, it's, it's an all-day course, so it's, it goes from like nine to four. They feed you, so. It's well worth it if you can, if you can take your time off or whatever might work, but it's, it teaches you a lot of different things, not just the parliamentary procedure, but I'm sure that's something that they take note of because of their spots, so. It's normally seventy dollars, but between HEDC and Hillsborough and Trail County, seventy-five dollars is waived, so. If you've got questions on it, they can just get ahold of me, or it is posted on, on the Experience Hillsborough Facebook page. So, I don't know if there's a link on that at all on the city page or not, but, so, it'd be good. If you're looking at doing that and you just wanna get a little bit more experience, that'd be a good course to go to, and like I said, it's in Mayville at Goose River, Maine, on Wednesday, October sixteenth, so. I think that's all I have at this moment.
Okay, Jason?
Only thing I have is something I think we should look at as a committee is, I was looking at the numbers, cause we're getting to the time where we normally do the, the lift and levels with Dave, and looking at the cemetery budget with the increase in the mowing bill and the spraying bill. We actually went a little bit over this year, but we had some leftover that we can cover this year, but next year and going forward, with us being maxed out on our bills there, I think we should, as a group, sit down and try to figure out which items we want to be the priority. So, that's the only thing I have for us to kinda look into as we plan for next year.
So, if you haven't noticed, the trees have been, they started working on that the last couple weeks, and they've gotten most of them done. There's still a few left to go. And then they'll be coming back to do the stumps, cause we were able to get them at a fairly decent price. We're not having to have the guys do it. They did drain the pool, and we're looking at painting it, so I'm trying to get some information on, we're gonna have to get some sand blasting done, so we're wait, I'm waiting to hear back from a few of them to see what it would cost to do that before we start painting it. And then Casey had sent out the proclamation that I hope you guys would like to approve and do. We did this before for Ed Olson. And so I thought this would be one token of appreciation for Lorraine and the years of service that she put for the commission and our community.
Could you just have approval on that?
Approval, and then we'll get signatures from you guys, cause I think the one that got sent out didn't have the actual date on it, yeah.
For anyone listening, this was requested from the family, that not everybody does have Facebook. And as you mentioned Levi, Lorraine was a huge, I was reading you, it was wearing, and she did a ton for the community. And it was of the family's request to notify anyone if you're not on Facebook that they will have visitation at St. Rosa Lima Catholic Church on Thursday, September nineteenth, from five to six-thirty. Prayer service will also be Thursday, September nineteenth, from six-thirty PM. Visitation on Friday, September twentieth, from ten to eleven AM, and the memorial service, September twentieth, at eleven AM. So, it's all at St. Rosa Lima Catholic Church, but I know they had requested that. We kind of announced that just in case somebody doesn't have Facebook. And with that, I will make the motion to approve the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. And that is all I have tonight. JR, did, oh, I forgot to, no. JR, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Casey?
Um, I just have some quick updates. I'm currently working on an HR binder and getting things a little more up to date in my office per the handbook. The BNSF question was answered regarding the property that they own over here between Anchor and Tim Wright. We are gonna be reaching out to Anchor and seeing if they'll move their semi-trailer. The MRES rate study will be, will be beginning shortly. Tim, I think it was Tim that reached out to me, either Tim or Terry, today, and we're gonna get going on that very soon. Audit twenty-twenty-three is going well. We have a couple small hurdles to figure out from earlier in twenty-three, but overall, it's going well. And then Wednesday, I'm gonna be in Grand Forks in the afternoon with MFOWA training and helping to host that. The only other thing that I wanted to make sure to discuss is Bambi's here to discuss the armory, so. And that's all that I have right now.
Okay. Anything from the Sheriff's Department?
No.
Okay, and there's no change on the beautification, so we'll go into old business and we might as well just start with the armory. And did, were you able to find anybody that would be willing to be on call, or Nicole, is it you that's?
I have one person.
Okay.
We may have one as well, possibly. We've kind of reached out a little bit to this person, so.
See how we can put together a list of those.
I know the one that I was talking to would have some questions and stuff like that, like expectations, but they aren't interested in getting involved and actually, possibly if we did want any type of regular cleaning done there as well, or in the next contract, bidding for all of the city properties, so.
Yep. Yeah, the one, I'm trying to think how to, kinda, we, we had somebody interested in doing the city cleaning. They're currently part of our current cleaning contract, but her and her employer are having some conflict. She reached out and let us know that she'd like to bid at it as well, so she was kind of maybe our idea too, if, if nobody else came up in conversation, so.
But we still have to figure out how we're going to assess and when we're gonna do it. Maybe on the contract itself, do we have to have on there written, this is when they'll be out by time, so that somebody can go in after and check it?
Otherwise, it gets checked out on Mayville.
Otherwise, it's not till Bambi gets in.
I'd say just the morning out for the event is the best we can do, cause they're not gonna wanna go up there and clean at one in the morning, I don't suppose.
No, but sometimes they don't always clean out. They may have it rented for Friday night, but they're not gonna clean out till Saturday afternoon, so. Maybe we just, when they sign up, if you had a, this is the end time that they're gonna be out by, so that
You can go in and check it?
So we can go in and check it? And JR could maybe add that in when we... Cause the other thing we had determined was the fees that we were gonna charge. Any thoughts, Bambi? On any of it?
Well, I'm, I was more here to figure out who's gonna clean it this time, cause like the gym floor is still
It's still.
Covered in dried alcohol and dirt and all of that, and again, I did all of the rest of the cleaning.
Great, so we did keep the deposit, correct?
To my knowledge, we haven't given it back, no.
Okay. So, maybe we can get one of these to see how they would do it this time and...
Be a good way to show them what's going on.
Right.
If they're interested.
Yeah, I mean, the gym, the dirty isn't affecting us, it's just in putting stains on the floor that will permanently
Right.
stain it, and the other part is, the floor hasn't been stripped or waxed in the last two summers now, so that's really showing. The school used to come over and do it, and then they told us it was gonna be an every other year thing now, so it should've been done this summer, and it never got done this summer. So, I don't know. If, cause they're not using it anymore really, if that stops or?
Well, they are, cause baseball, softball's.
Oh, yeah, softball, baseball, and that, yeah, I guess. But it did not get done this year, and it's showing between all the softball marks everywhere, and just it not getting cleaned properly, it's, it's showing that even when the floor is mopped, it looks like it's everywhere.
Right.
It's cause of all the good lights, I couldn't see no one.
Yes. So, Casey, maybe shout to John.
Play solos.
John. Drive her again.
Okay.
Just check.
Yep.
About getting the floors done.
I was just thinking aloud, is it, if it's becoming an issue, is it something that maybe we, if we have cleaners that are willing, maybe we just up the cost of the rental and we just have the cleaners clean it every time?
I'd be fine with that. I think part of it was people didn't wanna pay the rent fee, was the.
I'd rather see, if you're gonna raise anything, I'd rather see the deposit raised, because you do have people that are responsible and accountable, that they can pay three hundred, and they're gonna clean up, why are we punishing them?
Who had a comedy wedding there and never had an issue, and that looked like the last.
Yeah, that's a, that's a just.
Three in a row, so I mean, it all.
That just doesn't make sense, what's going on there.
Sometimes it may not have been perfectly done, but it, it did the gym, and it was just the last three that have been the issue now, so.
I would say we figure out what the cleaners were looking at, considering what charge, and make sure we at least cover that part of the.
I don't personally, if you're mopping that gym floor by yourself, it's a couple hours.
Easy.
Easy, depending on how dirty it is. Like right now, if we went in to clean that gym floor, I bet it'd take you three hours. And your mops would be so dirty by the time you're done, that it would be useless to continue to mop.
Well, does that machine that we have work to do any of that, or not? It doesn't work, or?
It doesn't work, no.
It doesn't work.
Okay, well, we should get that fixed.
Abby and I probably went through five buckets of mop water apiece, and we split the gym down the middle, and it was, I mean, we were.
I went through the work to make sure so nobody complained that the floor was dirty. I cleaned the floor before that wedding. I came out on my vacation day to clean that floor before the wedding, and it did not get rid during the wedding, it was like.
So, do you wanna look and see where we can get the machine fixed?
Yeah, we can do that.
Maybe have a, consider like a worst-case scenario type thing.
Maybe we should've bought the one that the school was offering themselves a while ago.
So, to that day, so let's say that it's, and I don't know how bad it is now on a scale of one to ten. Have you seen it worse, or?
The last one was worse.
The last one was so much worse. Me and Abby were peeling my knicks off the floor. It was disgusting. It was awful.
And so you kinda know how many hours you guys spent on that, so that definitely is a minimum, bare minimum.
Yeah, Abby got paid three hours to be there overtime, and I mean, if I wasn't helping her, it probably would've been five or six, cause it just took that long.
So, at five or six, and you're, and that's just the gym floor where there'd be, Bambi put in a few, three hours there. So, you're looking at nine to ten hours at, at least fifty bucks an hour for a company, if not more. It's not seventy-five.
So, a minimum, we probably have five hundred dollar deposit, right?
Minimum.
I have to do reports on no carpet cleaning, if we just, yeah, I don't know.
Good. So, maybe raise it to eight hundred?
I don't know, I think I'd start at five and see what happens. If you start losing a lot of renters, or we get a lot of complaints.
Well, they could always ask for, if there's somebody that comes in with hardship, they could also ask for the commission to waive or do a special circumstance of some sort, but.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, if you're okay with that. Do you keep the consistency then? So, I don't know. How do you determine that?
Right.
Everybody said, "Why, he's, I can't, I can't write you a check." But to me, I know that, I would say, "I'll write you a check for a thousand dollars, because I plan on cleaning it," but the next guy.
Right.
Well, the check is, is kept, so it's not cashed, it's not, it's.
But that's what I mean.
Yep, that's, that's exactly what we do. We ask them to write two checks. We keep, we just hold the deposit check, so. And if we have to cash it, then we end up doing that.
Cause when you start writing a lot of two different checking accounts, you might, might wanna get nervous.
Right.
If you get a check from a closed account. That wouldn't be good. Or here's the one for the rent, or here's the one for the deposit. That clock has been closed for two years.
So.
Casey, would it be something that maybe you and, you and/or the ladies, maybe you swing these couple of dress of people over there and show them around one day and see what they say for cleaning stuff?
That'd be great, yeah. You wanna give me your name later and, yep, yeah, absolutely.
And we can kinda see what they're aging to where we have to have now.
I see Ray didn't come back.
I didn't have the right coffee.
So, it's your fault.
Well, we should determine what we're gonna put the, the contract or the deposit at, so that it can start now. Cause everything else was in there was, I think you guys were okay with. We just never determined what the contract, or what we wanted to set the deposit at.
Yep, with JR's new proposed rental contract, we did request in the office to have a checklist of items to be cleaned in order to get the full deposit. to be cleaned in order to get the full deposit back with kind of a monetary fine for everything that isn't done. Our suggestion, open to interpretation, was a $1,000 deposit. There's 10 items on the checklist, be $100 held for every item that isn't completed, is kind of what we were thinking. Some, some breakdown like that would just be nice for us to be able to not have to come back to you guys every single meeting and say, okay, well, they didn't do this, this, this. How many dollars do you want us to hold back? You know, it'd just be a little more black and white, I guess. So that's kind of what we, what we suggested.
I can't remember the items, but the only thing I can think of that might be an issue is if, um... If they did, if they did mop the floors, which is going to take like three hours compared to... Forgot to empty trashes, which takes 30 minutes.
Right.
I don't know. I would say if they don't complete the list, they don't get their money.
You guys see it okay? I can read them off too if you'd like.
Unless there's something on there that for some reason they can't, physically or whatever able to do, like, why not?
Yeah, you bet, can you see it?
That's why you have the check.
I'm going to close this and see if I can make it.
I would agree with Paul that if they did it, they get it back. If they didn't do all of it, then they don't get it back.
You know, we can...
And we have to take pictures when they don't do it.
Well, and if we, and I would even say, okay, so maybe that's part of the issue is, is we check this facility at this time, the next day, or whatever it might be, and they have to come. And if there's something that isn't done on the checklist, you could give them the opportunity to correct it at that time. You know, so, but, you want to be, I want to be prepared to this. I don't want to say I'm, you're not going to...
You can't give them the opportunity to check. That would be corrected by 7:00 for them.
Well, but either, if you, if they're not, then how are we going to check it? How are they going to clean it?
Couldn't they come in on Sunday to do all their cleaning? I mean, typically, events are going to be Saturday night. Why can't they come in on Sunday and...
Oh, I thought you meant like on Monday.
No, no, no. It would be the time...
No, before Monday morning.
The time that it's inspected.
Yeah.
So that whatever time they ended. And then would you guys be willing to work, if we had that time that ended? You guys in the office work out who's going to check it, because we pay, this, we could do the same, whether it's here or the, one of the guys from Public Works, because they all get...
Two-hour minimum.
Two-hour minimum to come in and check it and...
I know previously, when the ARG was rented, it was rented for just Friday, like they only paid for Friday. They had to have everything out on Friday. So if they rented it on Saturday, they had to be done Saturday. They couldn't come back at noon on Sunday and clean everything out. They had to rent it for a whole day to get it in. Is it still like that? So they're paying, they pay for Friday, and then they get Friday, Saturday, Friday to clean it?
No, not generally, no.
I don't, yeah, I don't think so.
The only time we've let them in is when they got it Saturday. We let them in Friday night to do decorating and things like that. But there's still many paying for Saturday.
Right, but with all the weekend Friday weddings, we've seen where it's drug in, it's not made before they work it up.
So that kind of brings up another point too, because I've heard that some have rented it Friday and then others Saturday. And some of the Saturday crew has ended up having to clean Friday's event before they could set up their Saturday event.
That's happened in here too.
So, you know, then you're looking at, you know, who, whose mess in the deposit is it and how it needs to be done.
I'm sorry, I have a...
So I, I think I like the by the, um, when you have it cleaned by and then inspected by, like somebody inspects it.
You have an agreement...
Next event or whatever, so that somebody doesn't get hit without the deposit back.
Well, so basically, you're, you're looking at just, when, when they sign an agreement, they also put a time when, when they want to inspect it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, so we're considered a one-day rental. If they want it for 24-hour period, they're in time and they're out time. And if they're not out by that time, then it's an extra day or however. But have it written down, and that way we know when we can go in and check it out. Because that'd be the easiest, because otherwise, well, we're going to do that at, well, no, you said, this time.
Do the parties typically tell you guys in the office if they have had to clean up the Friday event type of stuff or...
One, um, one party did. I don't deal a whole lot with the rentals, I just heard about one. But, yeah, that's...
So that may be a thing too, is like for you having to clean up prior party stuff. Because, you know, they get their deposit back by Saturday, taking all their work that they're supposed to.
JR, does that make sense of having times in there?
They're all sleeping here.
There's JR?
Let me check on him.
Man, the table is waking up.
JR, are you there?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
I can easily amend the contract for that.
So then, if we made that change, what would, do you want to change the deposit to?
I think that's kind of where we got to figure out what to give a contractor cleaning at.
So I think it's a minimum of 500, but then you also remember, we have other staff that have, that we're putting in on this too, so.
So my next question would be, is the city staffs having to come in and check on it? A couple of them don't even live in town.
Well, if they're on call, they have no choice. Because if they're the on-call person, that's their problem, so.
That's where I, I was hoping that it would be one of the Public Works guys that is on call, because they come in every day anyways to check on the water treatment plant and do a few other things. It wouldn't take much for them to swim by and just double-check. As long as it's coordinated ahead of time that they're doing it.
Is there a certain time that they have to come in or...
Well, that's what we're trying to skip it so that we know that they're going to be done at this time.
But I mean, for their other stuff that they come in, is there a certain times or is it whenever?
I think it's whenever. Some are do it early, and I know like on Saturdays, they generally come early enough to open up the, the area next to the shops so people can put their...
Hey, Casey, you want to make sure you're cleaning the shop right back in the evening? Because I know a couple of them have outdated fobs, so they don't work. And I prefer like that, but I don't know if they ever came.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Do you know who all has keys to that building right now?
Abby said there's only four sets of keys to get in there. City Hall has one for renters.
The actual keys were held very, very tightly when they rekeyed the ARG. Like, yeah, like there's only maybe five keys out there to go to the building. And I'm, I have one, I know the city staff have one. The sheriff's department's supposed to have one. I don't know.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have one.
I'm not sure who else, but we were told when those keys were made that they were not to be made copies and we needed written permission to make a copy of the key. Now, fob on the other hand, I don't know. I have a list of all of my people that have one. I don't know if the city has a list of the fobs, because you don't need the key, you only need a fob to get in the door.
Is that from the last one or the...
All three doors are fobs.
Oh, are they?
Except for the gym door. You need a key for the gym door, but the north, south, and west door all have fobs on them.
Do you ever have a list of who has fobs?
I have a list of all the people that I've given to. I don't know if the city has...
There was at one time.
I would have to look. The nice thing about fobs though, if we notice that there's a fob that's missing that just hasn't returned, we can inactivate it. So no big deal after that.
If you don't know how many are out there, are you...
I don't know.
There weren't a lot that one time then.
I was just curious, I went to deliver a cake and the doors were locked, so I was sitting outside for a while. And then a vendor pulled up and boop, in the, in the building they went. And I was like, huh, I don't even have a key in here. So I was kind of, I was just curious.
Yeah, that was why they rekeyed the whole building, was too many people had keys and they're going in and out of the building. And I don't know if it was theirs, so. Nice thing is they repeated all to the same, but then it was like, find your life away, we were giving the keys.
Right.
Well, if you don't have a list of key fobs, if you shut them all off, you'll find out early who's got them.
Right?
Casey and I can all see who comes in the building at all times. Like, we can pull up the lock and enter the fob number in, and like mine are associated with people. I would imagine when you program it, you put the person's name into it, so.
Yeah.
If it's not somebody we recognize, either of us can be activated on, with a click of a mouse.
Yep, yeah, typically I lean on Sarah for that. She does it, you know, a lot more often than I have, so. But yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that there's a log on the website, because I, I know Sarah has a tally of how many are active and out there, so.
So would you guys like to set the...
Until we know more as far as the price, I would be willing to say $500. I mean, on, on the deposit.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I'll make a motion for that.
To approve the contract with a $500 deposit?
Well, then all, then we also have to have changes...
But those are the other changes.
Other changes as far as when people are going to, an, an out time, when they want to inspect it. I'll get that in, so.
Okay, Paul makes that motion. Is there a second?
Do we, do we have a time? We're just going to start with the 500?
I think they should fill it in when they rent it, like when, when you're renting this...
I think there should be a spot on the contract.
And when you'll be out by?
Yeah.
And then they should put in that date and time.
I think we should try to also work it while we have our Public Works and possibly going out and about. So they're already out and about, we're not paying another two hours of on-call overtime swinging up there and checking it.
Well, I think if we know what time it is, they should be able to work it in within their schedule to get it figured out. I think, that's what I...
I think we can, I think we can try and see how that goes, getting the time. Let's try it and see how it works. If it, if it don't work, we might have to go to PMV, but...
I can tell you, you have time, so as of right now, the ARG is not rented until December.
Right. And that's the last one we have so far?
I believe the last, like I said, Abby, that there wasn't anything else in December.
Because the December one will still be under our old, so we need to get the new...
There's not coming up until December, why, can we just push it off until next meeting? And that'll give the cleaners hopefully a chance to go through with the cleanies?
As long as we don't sign any new contracts until then. They can book it, but we won't sign a contract.
Okay.
So just put it on the agenda. We think you'll have time, well, you got three weeks. So you should be able to talk to those people. Just put it on the agenda for next time.
Yep.
Okay? I'm okay with that.
Can I ask you about one more thing?
Sure.
So with a few of these last storms that have come through, I think the roof has gotten some damage on it because now we have the... So the south side, by the back door, that room that's along this side. I had sent John an email about it last week, but since he's not here. Below the two in the corner and right below the one window, there's now mold on the walls because water is now pouring in when it rains.
Water, some window seepage.
And on the other side of the building, where we had talked about, after that storm came through, the one side started leaking. Dan put some stuff on the roof, it stopped, but now the other side, I don't know if this last storm or the last, that same storm did it and the wind was going perfectly, but the water, like the whole trim on the top has all broke open and water is like pouring in when it rains really heavy. And now we actually have two spots of mold on the wall. So we need to figure out how to have that sheet rock out and get some of the mold in there, because right now the room is quarantined off. We can throw that safely here.
There was quite a bit of window seepage from the last, this last storm. And we, we had a guy come visit our house and get something to the test lab, and he, or spray that we can put on and like, it's it right away.
Well, the sheet rock actually, like you touch it, your finger goes through, it's like that radish. It's coming in from the inside, it's dripping down the wall on the inside, and it's coming out through the sheet rock.
But you might have to replace that, but also do some sprayers.
Yeah, so that whole section of window now will also need...
So that's John, right?
Yeah, it's John, yeah.
So let's, we'll let John know and have him...
Have you got John's number to contact him?
Huh?
Have you got John's contact information?
I emailed him about it last week, but he never responded.
Okay. I'll, Casey and I will check in with him then. Which classroom is it?
Uh, it's our school eight room.
Which is like, which room now?
The, the one right next to the south door, the back door.
Okay.
You said two spots, right?
Yeah, there's two spots along that same wall. Oh, yeah. So the other side previously got fixed, now it's this side that's now... We need really, really, yeah.
We'll get to him on that. Okay? Yes. We have a motion, is there a second?
For the 500?
For the 500 and the, and the rest.
I thought we were waiting on that.
Oh, yeah, they're fine.
We're all here to keep everybody in line.
All right, next item is our handbook. Casey has some things that she was going to mention on there.
Yep, um, see you, Andy.
Thanks, Bambi.
Thanks, Bambi.
Okay, so, um, I highlighted a couple questions, or a couple areas that I had questions on, and then did a couple of line-through, um, areas, just to, you know, just to get some clarification. I don't see that my page number's printed out on here, so sorry, guys. Um, I just needed a clarification, and I talked to Levi a little bit about this just before the meeting started. Regular full-time employees are eligible for benefits during the probationary period. We double, double-checked it. Further in the handbook, it states that employees aren't able to use vacation benefits during their probationary period. But it doesn't say anything about sick leave, which was, seemed to be the intended, you know, intended thing. So just wanted to clarify that. Wanted to clarify overtime being traded in for vacation days, got that clarified. Okay, some, some of them have page numbers and some don't. The ones in the beginning don't have my page numbers. The biggest one that, don't mind the yellow highlighted areas, just because I couldn't get them to un-highlight from, from the original document that we had. Okay, yep, here we go. So it would be page 35, employee pay scale, which this has kind of been a hot topic already. But I just wanted to get a few things clarified or amended, however you guys want to do it. The third paragraph on page 35, public works employees and auditor staff salary range is 17. It, you guys have started at 18 this last year for beginning employees, I believe. So my suggestion is to change that to 18, if you'd like to continue that. After talking with Public Works, they did say that there's really not a wastewater distribution, but there is a wastewater collection course, so change the wording on that. And then for the other incentives on page 36, it was just changing that distribution to collection. And then, just in talking to Roy about a couple things, master electrician certification. He said that might be a concern if it's a necessary position for Hillsborough. He said that the education is almost equivalent to an electrical engineer. If Hillsborough wants to have somebody with that education level, great. But he wasn't sure if that was applicable to the city. And then as far as, as far as Roy knew, there is no master lineman certification. So just suggested to maybe take that out or figure out a better, better title for that, if, if you guys want to keep something in there. And those were my big ones that I had. The staff and I had training on the policy manual on Wednesday afternoon last week. We went through the big hot topics, whatever we could cover in an hour. We went through what their benefits are. We discussed the incentives, or excuse me, educational incentives. I did stress to them too that employees are, employees are limited to only receiving up to two educational incentives per year unless it's approved by the commission here. We just, we're not able to do any more than that. But if, you know, if budgetary concerns are, are, you know, brought up with, with these, like I know they have been, you know, maybe it would be beneficial if you guys would choose to keep the incentives. Maybe it would be beneficial to get all of our employees on a plan to see what they would like to... Maybe it would be beneficial to get all of our employees on a plan to see what they would like to be certified in, um, over the next year or so. All of the employees, um, stated at the meeting that they were really appreciative of the, um, incentives that you guys provide. They, they think it's great. So, um, if able, they would really like to, to keep these. So that's, that's what I have. That's kind of my two cents on stuff. So everything else, I'm gonna hand over to you guys, so.
So I guess my opinion, or my thoughts on a couple of things in the manual is, I still think that we need to get rid of the certifications and keep salaries accordingly. And go to a normal employer type salary scale. And I think we need to do a payroll survey or a pay study to see what people in similar positions, in similar sized counties, there's towns, make to see what kind of a pay schedule we should have. Um, but I think our employees should be paid more starting off and, oh, so, I mean, if I go through this. If I really wanted to, I could make seventy dollars an hour working and running a street sweeper. If I wanted to get all these certifications. And I just don't think that that is very practical.
What I, what I'd like to propose is, you know, there's a lot of changes when it comes to legislative bills, HR practice, um, even just things that go on in the state. And I, I would actually like to propose that we take so many pages of this and review it and go over it for each meeting until we get up until the end of it, so that we are all on the same page with the information. It seems like there's questions asked when I was flipping through. But as I started reading it, I had questions, cause I, I really like detail. And it should be an easy reference guide to just be able to read it and understand it. But, I mean, that would be just from my take, so that it's kind of updated. And the information has, you know, that has to be, needs to be, should be.
So I, I guess to go with mine is I think that we should also look at this chain of command. And we should fix that. And we should have, um, I think two things. I think since we've made Casey kind of overseeing the entire city department and then reporting to her and working with her on things. One, I think, I don't see why we should need a commissioner involved in personnel. I think we should give that to you to Casey. I think what we should also do is where we have our current public works superintendent. I think we should get that thing split out to what our current staff is with our supervisors. And then under there, we should have employees assigned to them, positions assigned to them. So like, let's say, uh, Brian works under Roy. So under that position, there would be certifications, just like we did with the pool. Where we kind of expect you to go out and get these certifications because it's relevant for that position. Same with the, the public works. Um, the person that is working and assigned to Jay or people, whichever. That person maybe is required to get the mosquito spray certification. Uh, level one with the water plant, so they can do the on-call stuff. And the landfill certifications. Those certifications are part of the requirement of their jobs, not additional pay for it. And then accordingly, we adjust starting wages to reflect that, that those, those certification type things are gonna be required. And what a person in that position in another city or town would also be making comparable. It's kind of where, where my thought process is going. I, I think that Casey's doing a good job at, and working with the guys, that I don't think, uh, we need to spend commissioner time. I think Casey should answer to all five of us, not one, on personnel issues. And then I think we should break up these other positions and have them all in this. If we're gonna, if we're gonna attack this manual, I think we should do it right. And split the other people in positions. You don't have to assign a name, but just like they are here, this is the job, here's the staff. They fall under this position and it's laid out what certifications they would be required to have. If that makes sense.
Okay, anybody else? I know what I expect that we'll get through all of this tonight.
No, that's why I was like, maybe just-
Kinda like that idea. And I think maybe we should start with parts that we, you know, are the most pressing, our, our page. And structural setup, I think are two main things that we keep discussing. So if we can finalize those two, some of this other stuff, we can come back and tweak, like Nicole said, maybe. Some of this other stuff, we might be able to do, you know, besides these two main focal points. We might be able to do the other stuff in two, three meetings. Cause it's, it'll be fairly quick, yeah. Fingers crossed, but.
I would have to see what you're, I'd have to see an example of what you'd want for chain of command. I'd have to see it drawn out by somebody. Because I can't, I don't really, I kind of get an idea what you're doing, but I'd rather see it-
Right.
On paper, on how it would actually look, so. And, and I will say, that my, my hard part is, is we, we cross, we cross-train so much. And we've got guys doing, we don't have one guy that just goes to the water plant. We don't have one guy that just does electrical work. And we've got, we've got more than one person doing the jobs. So that's where the tricky part comes, is, you know, now, now, there's just not one wa, one person that's water plant certified. You know, so I, I, I see the part where we could determine who, who do we want in these positions. And, and I also like the fact of, of like, I don't know, cause you or Casey said about, okay, what are we, what are you planning on doing in the next year for budgetary? So we kind of know what we, what we need. You know, back when we put this in, we were, we didn't have, we needed these positions filled. Now we're getting them. So now we got luck out here. Now we got a lot more at. Okay, now how do we manage them now that we have them full? Does that make sense? Because, because this, this was a different time. We, we couldn't get people to do this time. And we said about it, so. But now we've got them to do it, so now we, we went from one extreme to the next. Now we got a lot of qualified people. But of course we have to pay them. Whereas before, we didn't have people qualified to do it, but then they weren't getting paid, so finding that balance. So that's how I look at it.
And that, and that's why I think if we bring, figure out what the positions entail and bring up the starting wages to that, it would help. Like I have talked to Jay and he has also said that, you know, you could pay, if we could pay this much an hour, I guarantee I could find people that would come and work here. So I, I think we would be better off if we had a higher starting wage that had some of these certifications built into the positions that they're being hired for. And then go to a normal structural, I still think, um, do like a retention pay. You know, and I don't, the years could be up for debate, but after three years, you get, besides your COLA, you get a bump showing your longevity. After five years, you get another one. After ten years, you get another one. Whatever the years are, you get an additional bonus besides your normal type stuff. And the rest of the pay is based on positions as well. So that also in the same sense, we don't have an issue that we're having right now where supervisor, somebody's making more than even our supervisors. And it would help eliminate that possibility. Cause right now, just for an example, I could get hired on tomorrow nineteen dollars an hour. And I go, and I decided I want to go through the electrical course, but we don't need an electrical guy. I finish that, I'm up to thirty-nine dollars an hour. Trying to find the, the, the page here. All right. I decide I want to go get my landfill certification. That's another dollar. That's forty dollars an hour. If I get my chemical applicator, that's forty-one dollars an hour. Do my OSHA, that's forty-two. Take a leadership course, that's forty-seven dollars an hour. And our supervisors are making mid-thirties. So I just think the way this is currently set up, if I wanted to, I could be, again, and hey, I love our streets being swept. But I could run a street sweeper and be making sixty dollars an hour if I just kept doing certifications. Now is that what we want? Because there is no limit on here that says how many certifications that person can get. And it's also not related to the necessarily jobs they're doing.
Well, and I think there's a difference between primary and secondary. Somebody can do somebody else's job, but they don't do it a hundred percent of the time, whether they're just a fill-in or something. Does that warrant high pay, the same as the person doing it full-time? I don't know, but, I mean, it's a hard one for me, you know?
I'm open to all the discussion, but, uh, there's two sides to everything, so we have to be sure what we're doing is... I, I think it's more, I think it's to solve what you're having a problem with, they would have to get it pre-approved. So do we need, do we need another water treatment? Do we need the chemical applicator? Okay, if we need those people and you're willing to do that, well then it'd be, be approved and now they could do it. But you just couldn't do it because you wanted to get low pay.
Right. I can understand that to a point, but then also you still have your, your yearly reviews and other pay raises. So, I mean, you're still, you're still potentially, depending how it's done, you're still potentially looking at stuff you're not aware.
I, I, I've never been a fan of, of yearly pay increases, but that's, I'm a business owner, not an employee. So I'm gonna pay you by your performance. I'm not gonna pay you by, I don't, if you- All your, all your examples, I could have a guy that's been there for two years and does way more work than the guy that's been here for ten years. I'm not gonna pay that guy that's been here ten years more money when he's not performing. In my business, in my business, it's easy to track that. Here it's a little harder, you know? So I'm more of a performance-based person if you're doing the job. And that's where I think, that's where the evaluations tend to be at.
And that's where I think the evaluations would be important, is that your pay raise is up to this, but it's depending upon your review too.
Right, right, yeah. Cause you can't, cause if we're not getting, if we're not getting any performance increases, well why, you know, why aren't we paying you?
Exactly. No, I agree with that part.
But I think there's a lot of things to talk about, and maybe, if, if they did want to get it all done once, we'd almost have that like special meeting to issue.
Well, and I, I honestly think that the focus should be on the job and what you enjoy doing, not let's get this and this and this to make seventy dollars an hour. Like the goal should be the intent, that you enjoy your job, that you like to learn, and it's not just about the money, you know?
But I do-
But I'm small business too, so it's-
Well, but, but, but you have, you really have to look at the, of why that was done intentionally. Why it was first done, because, and I can't emphasize that enough, cause I was just coming on then, and we just couldn't get people to do it. Because they didn't, they, 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 well, why should I, if I'm getting paid eighteen bucks an hour, why should I go get water treatment facility, training if I'm not gonna get paid for it?
See, and that's why I think if you have starter, if you raise your starting salaries and you had expectations with them-
You open it to that.
Exactly.
Not thrown to it.
And that's why I say it's two, you know, you have, you have Zach, you have Roy, and you have Jay. And where that employee finally, or primarily falls under, those are the certifications we need to worry about with that person and the pay scale. So that way too, uh, a person that's doing a job that's not as demanding or involved as like water, obviously is pretty involved. And that's why they make more and have this stuff. So you have somebody that's doing the other stuff, but not water, they shouldn't be necessarily on that same pay scale.
But you make a good point, Paul. You make a good point, that it's, you know, performance. If you have someone else performing someone else.
Well, because, because then you, so if you raise your, your wage coming in, so let's say, I don't know, what are you thinking? Twenty-five dollars an hour for somebody to start? I, I don't know. But so now you're, so now if you raise, so if I'm getting twenty-five dollars to start, but I'm getting paid thirty dollars as a supervisor, I may say, well, why ain't I getting thirty-five? You know?
So, so if we bumped, so if we, if we bumped, in my view, we would also have to look at bumping the current staff accordingly as well. So that there doesn't create that compression.
Lot of good things to talk about, that's for sure.
It is. I think it's just a, a good thing to think about and have ideas on what makes sense and the direction we can all rely on to go with.
And I think just starting the conversation tonight, getting out there, I'm, I'm sure that the employees are listening. And maybe they've now heard what, you know, what we've been saying. Maybe they might have, Casey's heard what we've been saying, so she's probably got her ideas and thoughts, but because she's professional, she's, she's just typing them down.
What the thought process for other-
It's like the gears just spin up there, right?
Welcome to government.
In my ultimate goal or view, I mean, it's, it would be a win-win for employees and the city. You know, that both others make it all fair.
And that's why I would like to see what you're, what you're thinking on paper, what your suggestion is, so. Then it might make perfect sense, once I see it in paper and all the numbers work out. But until then, I don't really know.
Okay. Any other? So if you guys-
And John isn't here, so he might have a fourth opinion.
Well, I was like, that's why, it's a good discussion and something, you know, he might have an idea on.
So if you guys can work on some proposals on putting it down on paper for the next meeting, so we can move forward with it. We'll move on to new business. We have four liquor licenses to approve.
Five of them.
Did you approve all of them at the same time?
Yes.
We don't have to do them by one, right?
Are you making that motion?
Well, I reviewed every single one today, so I will make the motion to approve all of them. Ask Casey, I had a list of questions, like, what do we need here?
The one, A and R did not put down what liquor license type they were gonna get.
Yep.
The amounts. Yep, I emailed them.
Yep, and I do think, I did kind of find out that Sarah was kind enough to send them a letter with what they typically will do. And I think they were just planning on copying, pasting, cause their check matched the amount that was on their letter. So-
Which was?
Oh, craps. I can't remember. It's over there. I could go find it.
So maybe I'll backtrack. So there is one that doesn't have the amounts, and there's one that didn't initial the ordinances. But I, Casey was checking into that.
Yep.
But the one didn't initial, but they also had it signed at the very bottom, which is stating that. I do very swear that I am applicant, that I have read the application, know the contents thereof, so.
Does that count though if it says to initial all the other ones? I mean, if we're, if we're being papered for.
Great. I know they should have, so.
Could you make the motion to approve all permits pending, um-
Completion?
Yes, yep.
That application and the amounts filled in on the-
Upon completion?
Yeah.
That's it, can-
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries. Uh, next item is the MRES program. I assume, Paul, you had brought that up.
No, I never brought it in, I haven't.
No.
Well, that's not the, all this is different.
It's the same program that's done-
It's probably just to do it again this year.
You nailed it, yeah.
I would have to talk now, now we got a new principal, so I'd have to talk to him and, and see if they're, and I think they got a new fifth grade teacher too, don't they?
I don't know, I guess.
I, yes, they did.
Well, because the other one went to me, I don't think so. Well, you should know, cause he's an ag teacher. Or an aspiring ag, ag teacher.
We're just so used to you bringing that up every year.
So, yeah. Well, it's, it's, we basically, every year I try to get, I try to talk to, but I just haven't had a chance to meet the new, the new principal yet, so. Whereas before, John, I could always call him and, and that was all it was. In this case, this guy might not who, know who I am.
Cause we've been paid for it, right?
Huh?
We've been paid for it, yeah.
We've been paid for it. It's so much per student, so they let us know how many students there are. But this is the first, this, last year was the first year they did this new one. So we'll have to find out, I'll have to ask them how they liked it and then go from there. But I will, I will get that. Did she say when she needed this, or, did she brought it on, or?
I can't remember. I will look in my email quick and see if I can find it. But yeah, I just, I saw it on last year's agenda, so I thought, oh yeah, let's put it on this one too.
Yeah, and they're switching over as a person that's doing that now too, so.
Well, it could approve if you want to do it again, so Paul can move forward and get it lined up, if you'd like to do that, so.
I'll make the motion too.
Nicole makes the motion?
I'll second.
Paul's second. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries. Any citizens addressing tonight? Any other announcements? Any citizens addressing tonight? Okay. Any other announcements?
You're a citizen, you can, you can move, but you have to move from there, over there.
What was that?
Did he request for ninety days?
He did not, so.
So, John at Ham's had gotten back to us and he hasn't officially yet asked for the ninety day leave of absence.
He's, he's partially, he's used some of it. Due to the motion that you guys had made for his leave, it, we used up all of his vacation time, all of his sick time, all of his FMLA time, and then because the motion extended past those three items, we had to start in on leave of absence. So he has used some of that time.
Some of it, but he would have till the end of, basically, the, end of this year, if we were to grant the rest of that leave of absence. But it did sound like.
Is he paid for leave of, perhaps?
No.
Yep, his, his time that you guys made the motion for ended Thursday or Friday last week. I'd have to look. It was right after his birthday, so.
So basically, he's on now a leave of absence.
Correct.
And how long is that gonna go?
If we, if, right now, unless he submits something different, he would have to submit either a resignation or a leave of absence request. And so it sounded like he was going to submit a leave of absence request, but it hasn't been done yet, which would continue his insurance only till, for the rest of the time period, which is like, whatever, towards the first of the year.
And that's what you're working on him right now with, is that part?
She's working on it right now.
Yep.
So part of that is, are you guys okay with if he asks for leave of absence? Because otherwise, we'd have, his insurance would cover him till the end of the month. Otherwise, if we didn't, if we didn't get turned in in time, his insurance would end and then we'd, I don't know if we can get it restarted again.
Yeah, well, we would have to figure it out by this month.
Are we required?
Required to.
To get him leave of absence?
No. No. What, according to the policy manual, you have to, it, you get, it's almost worded kind of like FMLA. You have to offer him the same position back after he's through with his FMLA and his, you know, leave of absence, so. Um, yeah, we had to dip into that leave of absence bank, but, yeah, that's kind of where it's at, that I, that I interpreted.
And this would be for how long, how long, you said?
Ninety days is the longest, is that right?
Yeah, yep, and I think he maybe used fourteen or fifteen of those days. I'd have to go back, I, I just reached out to him today and he's been communicating back and forth with Levi and I later this afternoon and into this meeting a little bit. So, see if I can find it.
You're okay with granting a leave, the rest of the leave of absence? Okay, all right. That's all we really need to know, because then the official requests could come in and we can still keep him on the insurance and all of that. I just didn't want to him request it and then you guys would deny it and then we'd be stuck, so, okay? So we'll probably see that next month and then we'll get all the rest of it figured out. Is there anything else for the good of the order? We should print that quick so that they can sign while they're here too.
I will go do that.
Just make sure you put in.
The date.
The date, which was?
All of.
The twelfth.
The twelfth, okay.
Did you say to go online and look at trees?
Oh, no, I did. So, yes, go on online and you can look at the trees, they are on the website.
Yeah, whoever, Abby or somebody, they put all the pictures of all the trees, so if you're interested, there, they've got quite a few people taking them. I saw the list today of the trees that she had checked off, so there's people doing it, so.
So people are choosing, choosing what trees they want?
Yep, there's a list of ten, fifteen different trees that you could get, and then I'm lining up some help to go plant them on wherever they specify their location.
But they should, but they need to get into the office and they need to pick the trees they want and, and they also need to agree to take care of them, obviously.
Yep, so GR has a contract, just simple, that says that they are going to take care of it, and if they don't, neglect, then they need to replace the tree on their own if it's due to the tree dis.
If I get trees, will you take care of mine? Write it down.
That was for you, Dave.
I didn't get it working. I don't know when it got, the last time I looked, it wasn't on, so.
I just, I just got a notification saying it was coming on.
I know he was working on it, because.
He put a sign in my window, Dave, if I get trees, will you take care of them for me?
But they're boulevard trees.
Yeah, they're boulevard trees.
I won't work this way.
When you don't have a boulevard.
Maybe I'll be a different owner.
We have some smaller ones that you could put in, but we didn't.
Yeah, the time is running out on that, so get in and if you want some, there's nice pictures of them, so you, the pictures, of course, are a little older than what they are when you get them.
Do we happen to have that running on the bulletin out here?
No, but that's a good idea.
Hit your trees.
He's going fast, don't miss out.
You have to take care of it.
Is there anything else?
Maybe start off with, through a free throw. Free throw, free trees. That's like, free trees, then they'll, then they'll actually call in and then they'll find out.
Right.
What is, free trees.
I bet Cole wants one, don't you?
Are you all treated out?
I was gonna say, my boulevard is pulled out.
But you still have some.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I didn't know if we had to wait until she was there.
Oh, no, no, I just thought, well, everybody's here, can sign it. Any, is there a second to adjourn?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Paul. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Good meeting, everybody. Thanks for the open dialogue.